Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 1st, 2014 meeting of the Patchogue Village zoning board of appeals. First calendar will be that at the adjourned calendar. We'll do application fourteen dash fourteen, Desmond Enterprises, at two fifteen East Main Street. Seeking permission to construct new forty-nine hundred fourteen square foot one-story addition, and a twenty-two hundred ninety-one square foot second-story addition to an existing commercial building, requiring relief of four thirty-five point four. Yeah, fifteen feet yard required by point eight provided. Also requires relief of four thirty-five point four G. Building area required seventy-five percent, provided eighty-eight percent on the premise of the G five is the sum. May I have, go over to the microphone for a second. May I have the applicant or the representative there? Please state your name and address for the record.
Dean Petzoukas, two fifty-one Woodbury Road, Hicksville, New York, one one eight zero one.
Well, now, ready you to the applicant? Are you the applicant?
I am, I am, I am working for Dimitris Spanos, he's the owner. I work in an engineering firm, and I'm helping him out with these variances.
Right, before we get to that, did the mailings go in this last time? No mailing?
Yes, the mailings went out. I have these certified return receipts, so.
If you could read that account.
And I also have a picture of the sign that went up.
Okay, please explain your application for what?
We're seeking permission to build a one, the application is in for a one-story, but I was just thought, you know, I was informed by the owner, we're going to be looking for a two-story, but we would like to reduce it to a one-story addition, keeping the same footprint as indicated on the, on the plan. It will go, it will fill in the empty space between the existing one-story strip mall and the building to the east. It is currently a vacant, vacant space. It's been used as, say, dumping ground for, it's vacant, that'd be marked between the buildings. It would be more practical to, you know, to have it as a, you know, rentable, you know, retail space as opposed to leaving it, you know, in the condition that it is. We need some variances for rear yarding, side yard.
All right, before we get to that, what are we, we're mending the, the application then? Let's, let's just be clear as well.
No, no, it's a two-story, it's a one-story.
Oh, so seeks permission to construct new?
Four thousand square foot.
Four thousand, yeah, nine fourteen square foot one-story addition. In other words, that's both the front and the back, right?
Yeah.
All right, and then you're eliminating the two thousand two hundred ninety-one square foot second-story addition?
That's correct.
All right, so good. So we're eliminating that.
Do you have motion, Mr. Chairman? I'll take a motion on that amendment, Mr. Curran.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, that we amend the application to eliminate the verbiage where it says twenty-two hundred ninety-one square feet second-story addition to existing commercial building. Strike that and just leave it with the permission to construct new forty, four thousand nine hundred one fourteen square foot one-story addition, requiring relief as that requires.
Most of them, Mr. Curran. I do see one other question here. If they do build this out, what will be a side yard on this?
It would be a zero side yard.
It would be a zero side yard, I think that is allowed in G five, is this so?
Rarely get things in the five, though. Weird.
All right, so that's right, okay.
The building directly to the east also provides a zero side yard. It wouldn't be, we definitely put that into consideration. Either we're going to ask for, either we're going to leave a walkway or put a zero, and there was really no sense, it would serve no purpose to have a walkway that leads to the back.
Gotcha.
So zero made more sense for this.
Well, where's the dumpster going to go, then?
As for the planning board, the, the villagers was, was said that they would allow us to have a parking spot dedicated for the dumpster in this parking lot. They, they, it was clear, it was clear that this parking lot is underutilized at this time. You know, they were able to give, you know, they didn't specify how many spots it would give for its dumpster. I know right now there's a total of ninety-one parking spots. You know, at any given point, we just went, we just drove by, there's no more than, let's say fifteen or twenty cars there at a time.
Okay, if you'll just excuse me one moment, I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Curran, seconded by? I'll second the motion by Mr. Chavat on a, a, let me just do a little call.
More in favor?
More in favor? All right, not opposed, so say that motion carries. Your application has been amended, proceed.
Yeah, so the village would, would provide us with a, you know, parking space dedicated for the dumpster. We're not, we don't know which space or where, but it's going to be somewhere in the front parking lot.
Is that front? We can always put it on the west side.
Yeah, there is some, there is some land available on the west side of the building where if need be, the dumpster can be placed.
Okay.
I don't know.
That's, that's more of a planning issue than I, than something about appeals. But in any event, okay, so we have the side yard. Yep, just one second, please. And on the rear yard, the five point eight, you're going along the same line of the building system.
Same line as the building.
So that five point eight is the same as what has existed.
It's already been established to be existing building, we're not going any further out than the building.
Not approaching anymore to the other parts. Okay, thank you. So?
Relating to the, the issue with the dumpster, I know in the town, there's a town code that you also, recycling is mandatory, whether it's co-mended or single-streamed, but I don't know here in the village if there's any laws or ordinances that states that you also have to have recycling then with, you know, your disposal of the dumpster.
We don't have any.
Okay, I just wanted to just.
Yes, there is, you just going to have to comply.
That's all.
Which means a second dumpster for recycling.
Or sometimes with like big, yeah.
If it's with.
Whatever the requirement would be. I know the village, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Curran.
Carol, I believe there is a certain, the way it needs to be fenced off or closed off, there is an, there's asking enclosure.
The village department will deal with that.
Great, any other questions from the board? Mr. Spiker.
And perhaps this is a question for Carol or Mr. Chairman. Have you been to board the planning board and do you have a huge site plan from the planning board?
Okay, we went through a work session of the planning board. They gave me a verbal approval based on zoning.
Okay, well then, my follow-up question is, I understand that, you know, this piece of land that you're talking about building on, in my opinion, is not so useless as it contains your septic system, all of the drainage of the site, and a lot of underground utilities. The zoning board we don't get involved with. Where you place these things, that's more the planning board. What we do care about is just meeting our test for variance, which involves meeting certain life safety and some basic, you know, good housekeeping of our sites. Could you explain?
Yes, right now, there is an approval to connect the, to connect to the town sewer system in place. We're not connected today, but right now the septic system is located where this addition is going. We will disconnect from that, remove the tanks, and connect to the, the town sewer line.
And, and the drain? For your side? Will you have any onsite drains?
The only location for onsite drainage would be in the west side of the building. That's, there are, right now, there are septic tanks there. They can be, they can be replaced with, with dry, with drywalls for drainage purposes.
Obviously, our concern, or my concern, anybody, would be that since you're looking for relief from us, that this addition not cause any undue harm on all the residential properties behind you. So that would involve making sure that your, your building therefore, you know, is not dumping, when you do a new addition, if you're using all the space on your lot, that you're not dumping your drainage on the residences behind you, because that may be difficult for us to consider. We need more tests, we need to make.
Yeah, I can't, you know, I do not come prepared with drainage calculations or established, but I do, you know, realize that there is a portion of the west side of the building that just currently uses a septic system. We can replace that, you know, with dry, you know, drywalls as necessary, that will have to be designed, you know, if, you know, if this application is mandatory.
Okay, any other questions?
Just a clarification, that parking lot in front of that building?
Yes.
That's not your property, right?
That, that is village property.
It is village property, so you wouldn't be able to put any drainage in what appears to be a big parking lot for your business that most people would give to us. So the only usable open space would be on the west side of that?
Do we know that you stream of that parking lot?
That, that used to be owned by them, and then I think it was given to the village. In fact, I remember.
Yes.
Right, that's what it was then. In fact, I remember.
And also, we have, it says, sorry, first of the village.
State your name and address for the record.
My name is Dimitri Spanos, the president of Desmond Enterprises, owns the property at two fifteen East Main Street, Patchogue. We gave the parkland to the village, and we also have it in writing that the water from the property can be drained onto the parkland. It's in writing, and I'm sure you have it in your files.
Can you provide that?
We don't have it in our file.
For the village.
Is it easily available?
Yeah, I have it in my file.
Can you just drop, just, just expedite?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I remember, in fact, this is even going back to the early nineties, for some reason or another, it was almost overly utilized, that parking lot, you had kids, for some reason, made it a destination, and in fact, I can remember a legendary confrontation between two distinguished lawyers from Patchogue. Fighting heads over a racket and other matters. In fact, it was, it was grand theater at that time. Perhaps of a more innocent age than we are now. We're just so sophisticated.
And we also have a lake, you know.
Yeah. Well, it does seem to have worked, and, you know, the property, the parking lot doesn't seem to be utilized that much, although what you have that, well, you have the archery on the, on the other side, and I think during the season too, you have vegetables and this farmer's market going, yeah.
Any other questions?
So in any event, you know, even if we were to give the approval, it would be subject to all these other approvals, which, so the fact that we were to say yes doesn't mean the project would go forward unless you addressed the concern that have been raised here today, so.
Any other questions from members of the board? Any member of the public who would like to speak for or against this application? Sir, gentleman, excuse me one second.
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Joseph Christina, I'm here at Rose Avenue here in Patchogue. Just a couple of concerns about this, and we're talking about parking right now. We've had issues with parking, with the archery range overflowing down Rose Avenue, so we're saying that the parking lot's not being utilized. It is being utilized, it's full right now.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, just to address that, the east side of the parking lot's almost always empty. They park, everybody parks on the west side, so if everyone used the full utilization of the lot?
Right.
I think in all fairness, I think that's a bit, I mean, I understand you probably have overflow onto Rose because.
Yeah, we're still, even, even with, even with the permitted parking that's up there now, we're still having issues.
Right, I'm just saying, three-quarters of the parking lot's still empty though.
Okay, well, I mean, then, then the village is going to have to make sure they follow up on.
Right.
And then, do they care about the dumpster being moved to the west side? You know?
Was it west side?
It was west side.
Just in front, I thought it, yeah.
I think it might be moved into the parking lot.
You said, but if they couldn't go into the parking lot because the parking was going to the west side?
One or the other, whatever.
So if it goes to the west side, then it's, it's again on the Rose Avenue side, so the residences are going to want, we're going to be stuck with the odor of that and having to see it from.
Mr. Chairman, that's a facility development we'll deal with, we'll show Randy.
Thank you.
You know, I definitely got to put it over by the houses, we'll find.
That's, that's my, I'm sorry, I mean, the parking area is.
Still have your closure, it's got to be a closure there.
I'm all for, I'm all for it, they get cleaned up over there and it's sharpened up, but.
What's, what's, have there been not-so-nice people in that open area?
Well, yeah, isn't that the, the bodega that's on the end that was supposed to be Adelie? When we got the application for it, we never came and opposed it because we thought Adelie's going out, it's a bodega, and then it's, it's becoming something issue over there, what's, what's hanging out over there, so, you know, that's, that's going to be another fight for me somewhere down the road because they're drinking alcohol inside the place, and it's not what it's supposed to be, so.
The damage.
Okay. That's my, I'm sorry.
Thanks very much. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak for or against the application?
My name is Chris Payne. I live at thirty-seven Rose Avenue, three doors down from where this is. Rose Avenue, when I moved there, fifty-some odd years plus, it was one of the most elegant streets in Patchogue. Unfortunately, because of time, Main Street is becoming what it is. If you're always in Patchogue, you know what it is. I'd be opposed to this for two reasons. Number one, the west side of that building where all the dumpster makeup is, has to be my site, I have three doors down. It's an incitement area as it is now without adding an additional dumpster there. Secondly, firematic wise, I've also been in the fire department for fifty-four years, there's no egress to the back of that building. If they, if they close off that area between the side of the building, East Coast and Eastway, to the old A local store, there is no means, any fire truck, fire apparatus, everything's going to have to be hand-held to fight, fight a law, God forbid if there wasn't one. I don't think that's, this is a very sensible proposal. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak for or against? Would the applicant please come back up? Okay, so you have heard some of the concerns now of the public who is struggling. If you could address your tenant that has an archery on the west side, it seems that his clientele wants to use Rose Avenue, is there any way that he can use your lot?
Absolutely, they should be able, the, the tenant, the tenant with the archery range, I guess it is more convenient for the archers to park on Rose Avenue and walk right in, but that being, that being said, we have to notify the tenant to have all the clients, patrons of the archery range park on the park, parking lot, on the parking lot. We were literally just over, came just around the site, the, there is a number of cars there, tops twenty-five cars out of ninety-two spots, so realistically, the parking lot is nowhere near capacity. I do believe though that, yes, people do park on Rose Avenue to go to the archery range, it is something we have to address, the tenant, to let, to inform the, the patrons to utilize the parking lot. As far as the dumpsters being placed on the west side of the building, as for the planning board, they, they specifically said that they can give us a parking stall for the dumpster location. If that would be more appropriate for the neighbors, we would gladly be occupied by that and enclose it, you know, proper fence enclosure, you know, as required to, to make it, to make it right.
Okay, as far as addressing the tenancy of the bodega, trying to make sure that it's not a hangout, can you speak to that as well? Is it not a hangout now?
It seems like a restaurant. I actually ate there myself a couple of weeks ago, it's, you know, it's a day of hot and cold food.
Somebody hanging out.
People just go there to meet, to bring out the party? Well, I think it's the same about people who are old enough.
Right, right. If you can just be conscious of that. Now, the last one could be a little difficult now, not a lot difficult. What is the plans to get to the back of your building? This is again a planning issue, and I don't even know why I'm going down this bad, if that's not with the zoning board of appeals. But if there's a fire in that building, how will you, how are you going to?
There are, there are codes to travel distances in buildings and travel distance to the post-exit. Again, I'm not prepared to, to answer all those questions, but I believe, I believe if we have under, under a hundred fifty feet of travel distance, if one exit is fine, you know, I, again, I'm not, I'm not ready to answer those questions.
Well, let me be honest with you, that's always because it's a planning issue, I don't, it's all the way to appeals.
Okay.
There's nothing in my code that says anything about why, how they get in there.
There are.
You don't want to worry about area variance, use variance, that's where we can put it, okay? Any other questions from members of the board?
What, is it, you're going to have one store then, that entire length, is that it? And that will be four thousand?
Four thousand hundred square feet.
Actually, four thousand nine hundred fourteen, but it would be, because we're taking away the second floor, it will be increased by the, whatever the size of the stairwell is, which is approximately, just about two, approximately two hundred fifty square feet, so.
That's a pretty good store.
We're going to make it a little shorter, we're going to stay until the back of the, the Chinese restaurant, we're not going to go all the way to the back. This way, all the other stores have exits to come out on that empty, empty lot, so they can get out if they have to.
So you might, yeah, so.
Just goes all the way back.
To the setback, so you might not need this variance then to the rear yard, or?
I don't know, that's what I'm confused. Is this the only option, or?
Apparently, you're saying the back.
We refer to the Chinese restaurant, that's the last store on the east end of the current building? Okay, according to the site plan, it's eight hundred feet shorter than the rest of the building, plus another, what, five point eight? So you're talking almost twenty-four feet to your property.
We're going to stay up to the back of the Chinese.
Even with the Chinese.
You no longer have a rear yard?
No need to.
All right, can you recalculate then the size of the store? It's.
Yeah, I mean, we're running a count on the.
We're just discussing here from the record, it seems that we may just want to ask them for a revised site plan, because it will be much less, right, as we're asking for?
Yeah.
And the one thing, looking at this survey, and our building options, we can get a line to building code issues, but there will be some sort of setback from, between the buildings required by the building codes. I understand the building department will probably address.
I mean, one of these.
Well, right, I mean, I don't think they're going to be able to build, to build their building directly above the building.
I mean, there are, there are no windows on that wall, that wall is a machery, it is a, it is a machery wall. Our wall will also be a machery wall. There's no reason to leave a gap.
The village very much.
The, the, the.
Right.
Um.
It's just.
Wait, did the.
Mr. Spiker, you have a question?
This is a quick, where they're seeing some of the laws. The thing to show us exactly is going to change the total building area.
Right, which will reduce the amount of parking that is required, which may make this much less.
Well, now, we just have a quiet.
Well, the, the light coverage.
The light coverage will not be eighty-eight percent.
Or the lighting. But the building area, I meant, the overall building area.
When is the?
Because that's.
Does the planning board have another work session?
They do. Well, they have to formally go before the work, planning board.
Yeah, I'm not sure I can go to the calendar, but I'm not sure.
Tell you what, why don't we just adjourn this until you get all your numbers straight? And if you could give us a revised plan, okay? In other words, the building's going to be less than what's here.
Yes.
So it just, something that's submitted for the record, let, see if it, if it, is a compliance question.
And it's interesting because you're seeing less relief.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's a low building area, we call it building area, and we're going to, and not have questions.
Yes.
So, right, and it's very close.
They're also going to be quiet, obviously, go to planning boards, have any concerns of the public that are requesting these closures.
One percent.
And the fire.
And the fire, it's just the planning board will also, which I suppose concerns.
How much time do you think we need to make that revision?
Well, we've got a few days, we can, uh.
Want to come back to the next meeting, or what do you?
Do you want to go fifteenth, or?
I don't know.
You want to go to, what is that? Only because, based on what you guys have said.
Maybe, what's, what's?
November fifth.
Why do I know that? Get.
November fifth.
Yeah.
They have to go planning anyway.
Okay, can you come back November fifth? This way you might be, you might have to run a few things by the planning board, and perhaps another work session or whatever, okay?
I'd give you the date.
Okay, final first year, November fifth.
November fifth.
And all we need is the revised numbers.
Do we have to do another mailing?
No.
No, no, just.
It's not let up from the, from the village.
But the revised site plan, because it's going to be less, you know, which is everyone's passion.
I'll take a motion, please, on this application. Mr. Curran.
That we adjourn this application to the, November fifth.
Right. Motion made by Mr. Curran, excuse me, excuse me. Motion made by Mr. Curran to adjourn the application on November five. Seconded by, Mr. Homphell, one in favor? All right, not opposed, your adjournment on November five. Thank you. Next application will be fourteen dash fifteen, line twenty-five Boulevard, seeks permission to erect a new four-foot stockade, thanks to the front yard, do the hardship, there will be a yard, requiring relief of four thirty-five forty. Four foot provided, thirty inches required, applicant, applicant also seeks to erect a box six feet by twenty-five, with deck, requiring relief of four thirty-five fifteen J five, five foot required, zero provided, subject premise in the area residential zone. Good evening, welcome. Oh, yeah, certificates of, yeah, that's very good. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Ryan Hurd, twenty-five Boulevard, Patchogue.
Welcome, okay. So you want to put up this fence now, right?
Yes, sir.
Now, please explain your property and why it's necessary that you would want this fence.
Basically, the house is set all within that property, we have no backyard whatsoever. So any sort of usable yard or barbecues or whatever, we have no privacy whatsoever.
Yeah, this house is right on the back property?
Right on the back property. In fact, I believe a couple inches of it are on my neighbor's property.
Wow.
So what we're going to do is, right now, currently on either side of us, we have fences that go down lower towards the street, which tend at four feet. So what we want to do is keep that four-foot fence and just put it across about twenty-six feet towards the area that has all grass, so we have it in the side yard.
Parallel to the street.
About eight feet from the road, and then follow it alongside the driveway back towards the house, and then it goes at about sixteen feet over on the side.
Basically, it's trying to connect the four-foot, keep everything the same height, sort of like a side everything.
And we're also looking to put in a little patio on the side of the house. I don't know if you have the picture, but there's a shed currently there next to the house, approximately sixteen by fifteen feet. We want to do six inches off the ground, but that's probably not even needed. We want to make it right on ground level, but we do have a piece of metal that sticks up to the ground, and we just want to be sure it covers. up to the ground, and we just wanna be sure it covers. So we just want to make sure it's six inches from there to kind of cut that side.
Make it a cesspool, right? Something.
Any questions from members of the board? Yes, Mr. Tomfo.
Just wanna clarify, Laura and I both might have to decide whether to pet this location. Not only is the rear of the house on the property aligned, but so is the east wall of the house on the property aligned. The metal pipe that they're referring to is, I believe, the cesspool cleanup that they wanna cover. And they're kinda using it as like a little, I guess, patio area now, just in order. And that really is the only place that they have that they could kinda have any kind of access.
It's a very unique house, and there's no question.
Very unique.
Yes, we can have a decision.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think that the consensus was that this is kind of lies though, and he was.
Yes, this does not conform with.
Like variance, excuse me.
This really did predate any codes, for sure. Okay, any other questions? Any questions from members of the board on this? Any member of the public who would like to speak for or against this application? Wow. Yeah, wonderful neighbors. I've been saying, now I'll take a motion on this application.
Stand and I make a motion to close this application and put it on our decision calendar.
Motion made by Mr. Homfeld to close the application, seconded by Mr. Shabat. All in favor? Aye. Not opposed? So carry. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
The next application will be the tap link approved, James Bonanno, 114 West Main, seeks permission to expand existing restaurant to the second floor, with additional 45C, requiring a leave of 43531A11. 23 parking spaces required, zero provided, subject to premises in the D2 business. Does the applicant or representative there, are you?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and address for the record.
James Bonanno, 114 West Main.
David Johnson, 114 West Main. Great, and you have certificates of mailing for the neighbors? So gentlemen, you wanna put a restaurant to the second floor of an existing restaurant?
Correct.
All right. And what is on the second floor currently?
Two residential apartments.
And how many bedrooms are in those apartments?
One, two bedroom, and the front apartment, two bedroom and the front apartment, one bedroom and the back.
And your intention is to gut that area into 45C?
Correct.
This issue obviously would be a planning issue on how the people get up and down there, wire, show that whole bit, elevators, whatever, handicap, whatever, maybe that's. But we're gonna be talking about the parking.
Right.
What we have here is a situation where the 23 additional spaces are gonna be required with zero provided.
Right.
Now, do you have any provisions anywhere?
So now, we currently operate in the outdoor patio, which is another sub county courthouse property, which is 45 seats as well.
I see.
So what we're really looking to do with the upstairs is really shift our seasonal business from using the warmer months, obviously, out of the patio, and shift that current business that we already had on the patio, when it gets colder, we don't have the usage of it, to shift that business upstairs. We don't have the demand, the plans not to keep up the second floor restaurant open when we, in the warmer summer months, we have the patio, we just don't have the demand for all three, first floor, second floor, and patio, and frankly, even if we did, our kitchen's not large enough to be able to handle everything. So, we've got a unique situation where we're taking business that we already have, parking that we're already fulfilling with the municipal lots, with the county courthouse being right there, and the rest of the parking, and just shifting that business from seasonally from outside to upstairs.
Okay. And you have some kind of agreement, do you, with the county, that they use the lot, or is it people just using the county lot?
From what I understand, that, yeah, the sub county courthouse, where people are allowed to park in there, same thing with other venues that come to town, you know, the nightclub that's come to town, they've used that lot as well, so, yeah.
Do they get permission to have a patio?
I didn't hear that there was an agreement that, to the village, that.
That they could use that? No, 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 that they could have a patio.
Yes, they got permission for sub county.
A patio is a lease with the county.
That we have, that's all good.
No, I mean, for them to use patio to the village of a.
Yes, but it's more village.
We've had that for two seasons now.
And that's a leased parcel from the.
That's the least, that land's leased from the county, we gave them right, and that was done last spring, you know, through the planning board and everything.
Yeah, the way to get that, it's all. Any questions from members, any questions from members of the board?
Um.
Do you have to, again, it's a planning issue, but do you have to increase your sewer line?
Um, no, that, I mean, we've submitted our plans with Carol, and, you know, like I said before, we need the two egresses, is there already a second egress, just two apartments up there? But as far as sewers, no.
Yeah, that's a planning issue, I'm.
Along the lines, have you been having any issues, sometimes some of the places on Main Street have been having plumbing issues with going through the sewer line? With the sewage, any issues like that?
Yeah.
Stuff with overflow, or stuff like that? Just 'cause, only because every now and again, you hear something like, I have other friends that have places in the village, and they've had, occasionally have trouble with, when you're dealing with the sewer system, it's just curious, because we're worried about any kind of undue overflow on top of increasing the usage, that's.
Right, and like I said, the usage, I think, would be pretty similar, because, again, you know, with patios, we've been doing business in the winter months, using that sewage, and then, as of like, in the next few weeks, it's gonna be pretty cut and dry, that's not being used, that's when we'd like to start using it, to pretty much, we expect to see the same similar business, same similar usage, just 'cause.
But you're not having any issues right?
Yeah, nothing, nothing, no.
Any other questions?
Well, are you, are you willing to agree or covenant that you won't use the patio if you are using the upstairs?
I mean, we won't ban it, so it'll be fine.
Well, one, we'll give you a plan, we want you to commit to that.
I would, just.
You know, because this, it seems to me there would be a great temptation to do the patio and upstairs and the main floor.
You know, I'm sort of like, it started to be like alive at 5:00, when the police, we heard everyone off the streets, and they kinda got into restaurants, and, like, I could see, like, they, like, that particular day, we computed.
Well, but wait, but your basic argument's right, convince us, is that the total capacity is not gonna change? In other words, 45 people in the patio.
Capacity, obviously, will change from upstairs. Nice.
Is there a timeframe that you're looking at, like, for example?
Yeah, I know.
This past weekend, you know, it's considered fall, but the weather has been beautiful and seasonable or unseasonable right now. We had a feast this past week in St. Mirada, so they were looking to designate the fall time, and we have an event like a feast on Saturday, and the weather's beautiful, there might be overflow, crowd there, and he may wanna use the outdoor, then you, if he had the second story already completed and used, so, do you have sort of a timeframe? I know the weather gets a little.
I agree with that, my answer would be yes, you know, we would really like to say we're gonna use in the summer, to answer your question.
How many, well, how many seats are down on the first floor?
I have down here most 20, and then we have 16 high top seats in the bar area.
So what is that, 30, 41? 45 and 16?
20 and 16.
36.
36. 36. 16 in the bar.
16 in the bar?
16, table at the bar.
Oh, table?
There's high top tables in the bar area.
Plus additional chairs at the bar, so, which, which is.
Our actual seat is 80, seats would be 48.
Seats will be 48 on that first floor?
Including the seats at the bar.
All right, and you have 45 outside, and you're looking for another 45 upstairs?
Is it segment?
Basically, there's no parking.
My concern is the fall.
Yeah. Parking's a premium here. But, you say you wouldn't be using the upstairs at the same time as the patio.
Right.
However. All right, well, how do you think about this one?
Any other?
Whatever restrictions.
All right. Any other questions from members of the board? Gentlemen, excuse me, any member of the public who would like to speak for or against? Sir? Blodjak?
Excuse me, everybody, John Blodjak, 89.
Evening, John.
It's gonna be an interesting discussion. First of all, I'm in favor of the proposal. I think, you know, this is what's happening in the Village of Patro, this is intensification of uses, this is just the beginning of a wave, I think, in fact, this is already begun. Rumbar, I think, is a good example, taking over the space and building up. This is what these guys are doing, and then their title to it. Although I would suggest to these gentlemen that they think about doing what Rumbar did, which is to build an atrium, and they built the top space, so they don't need any kind of side space, but they got their upper space, if they can do that, I don't know how much money these guys have, that might be a second floor and a top floor.
Are you saying go to a rooftop?
Go to a rooftop, right.
Which, by the way, a lot of other.
I don't wanna hide this guy.
Is the way a lot of people are going.
Right.
Well, places are going.
So we have an example of that in our village right now, and Rumbar's gonna be coming online, and that's how they solve, in a way, part of their parking problem. And yes, I think there is some kind of parking issue, and we can't make believe that there isn't, and yes, there probably shouldn't be covenant, if they can switch off from one to the other, because, yes, you're right, there's a great temptation to use that space. But then again, I'm thinking about what space might be available, yes, you could speak to the county about an actual lease for the court space, an actual lease, like you said. The village has a new lot on Jennings, maybe they can, just like Lombardi's, reach an agreement with the village for the use of that space, and valet people back and forth. I think there's some space that maybe just, they just gotta look for, and maybe that might solve some of the parking issues, because otherwise, this is what we want in the village, we want an existing business, already successful, to become more successful, so, it just has to not contribute to our parking problem, which is severe at the moment, so, otherwise, I'm in favor of the proposal.
Thank you, Roger.
So now.
Anyone else who would like to speak for or against the application? I've been seeing none, gentlemen?
What they alluded to is, one of the parking committee, the chairman of the village.
Great.
And a couple of ideas I had, working with David Kennedy from the Chamber of Commerce, was one, double valet service, we're trying to figure out the trolley, and then when we got touch this valet service, we started early, I believe it was early August, maybe, and, you know, every week, bi-weekly, I've been checking in with David to kind of see how that service has been going, because he had, because I was concerned, when I'd be up front on a Friday night, in the summer, at midnight, I'd actually see parking spaces on Main Street, and I realized our parking problem isn't as big in the summer as it is coming into winter, when certain venues start opening again, they kind of take up some of the parking. So I was worried that the valet service would get discouraged, because the way, the deal we worked out with them is, the public would pay, you know, $5 to the service. Originally, the restaurant's gonna take, and be there and pitch in for it, but then we thought it might not be fair, you know, one particular restaurant's using 30% of the parking, and, you know, our favorite customers might not, or vice versa, so we decided to have the public pay the $5, and then we said, as a restaurant, those participating would validate that card, so if they came and eat dinner, as long as they spent, you know, $15, we give them $5 back with our check. So speaking with David, you know, I called him, say, hey, how is, are people using this valet service? He was like, well, you know, we've only had five cars parked last night. Said, all right, well, let's, you know, give it some time, let people know about it, and I was just with him yesterday, and it's been the same thing, where it's not being used as much, the valet service, so I don't know if that's a reflection of the full winter business hasn't grown enough, or if it works out yet, or if it's in a bad spot, which could be, or could be a combination of all three of those. But as far as parking goes, we are trying to take steps to alleviate, one other thing is, it's not, maybe not really as bad one, is, when you tally up the amount of employees on a Friday or Saturday night in the village between the restaurants, you're talking like a few hundred, a few hundred people, which is a few hundred cars. If the employees were to park not in the prime spots, right next to the restaurants or right in the first row of the lots, that would alleviate probably most of the headache of the parking. So we've been taking steps where we thought we would partner with the taxi company, make them the premier or the official, and I realize there's taxi companies in the village that are proving out of the public, but the trade-off would be, if we can get usage of a lot, a lot like the Bravo, Briar Cliff, and have employees park there, and use a taxi company as a shuttle service, to bring employees back and forth for the safety of the employees that are walking the streets at night, and in return, the restaurants would push that particular taxi company, when our customers say, hey, you know, can you call us a cab? Yes, call this X, Y, Z company there, you know, we, the signage in the restaurant's cards, so that's all stuff we're working on. I'm also the chairman of the restaurant committee in town, and on our last meeting, I asked the other fellow restaurant, you know, what's the parking rate from your customers, because it might be our clientele, or it might be that on our side of town, I think we have no parking, and notes, because the courthouse is, that lot's pretty large. So I would think, on the eastern part of town, some of that concentrated strip of restaurants, we're kind of, I don't know, the island over there, between Parabel and Public House, and Legitia, and Gaia, there are lots over there, you know, fast then, because our concern was the valet company would ditch out of us, saying, we're not making the money, we thought, because we're not parking any cars. So in our last meeting at the end of August, it was, you know, what's the parking rate? And a lot of them said, well, kind of same thing I was saying, alluding to, is, you know, there seems to be some spaces now that probably, that might change come wintertime. But all I'm looking to is, you know, we're taking steps to try to help, help the partnership.
alleviate the parkage.
And I think on our end, we probably will partner with those, because the courthouse is big, Briar Cliff's, a lot of our customers, you know, if it's busy, they're getting bargain bills, we partner with bargain bills a lot, Briar Cliff a lot, so, kind of on our end of the street.
That's a good, I'm sure.
It's about the end of the year.
It's gonna be the forums closed.
I don't even need to, that's.
I think we all know.
If they're closed, it's funny, you know, we're a funny partner, if they have a big show, that's when it sucks.
We understand. Any other questions, any members of the board, Mr. Rydick?
Do the businesses advertise the valet service, like, in their window and things like that? Is it advertised to your customers, like, in your.
Yeah, we, on anyone participating, there's a sheet, actually, Carol, the picture I showed you with the poster, there's a picture right on, that's a valet parking participant, you'll see it on there. One thing I've asked the chamber, not just the parking issues, but any, anything they'd like to get across the public, as far as fall festival, or family night, or whatever, I've preached a million times, if you can make us a nice-looking digital poster, or whatever it may be, something that the public can read, when you tally up all the restaurants, all our social media accounts, all our email newsletters, you're talking tens of thousands of people. So I told you, myself, as a chair of the restaurant committee, if you can get me that information, I'll make sure to disavow all the fellow restaurant owners, scientists who are in the public sector, so we can get more literature, so we can get out to the public more. But I think, well, I, I think, you know, the signs work great, but people just need, it needs to be out in public more, that we actually have this great valet service that there's no parkage ship, you can drop it off, if you're gonna eat, $5 is validated, and you could pick your car up, and it's right, it's right in front, right there.
Any other question, thank you, any other questions from members of the board? I've been saying none, no members in the public. Gentlemen, anything, anyone who wanted to add to closing? That'd be it, thank you, I'll take a motion, please, Mr. Kearns. I'll take a motion, please, into the comments.
Chairman, a question. Will we close the application in joint direction?
Was it, Mr. Congressman, to close the application? Second, President Shama, Paula Taylor. All right, unopposed? Close. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everyone else, for your patience. The last one this evening.
These other two are German.
Well, the Germans, I'm going to just read after the applications are here. We have people waiting on the way through applications. The next application will be out of fourteen days, eighteen, J.J. Enterprises, Inc., for the American Express Express permit, four thirty-five, twenty-eight, fifteen, to operate a taxi dispatch office. Such a purpose in the D1 business. Good evening.
Good evening. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Karen Spence, and I'm long to Menelabessa, one twenty-fourth Avenue, Bay Area, New York. Good evening. I have the...
Back to me, your patience, Council. Generally, we don't let attorneys wait.
That's okay, no crowd. Have the sample notice, pictures, the posting, and all certified mountain seats, and their return receipts, all signed by a lot of these people, their own neighbors. Good evening. I'm here to be happy with J.J. Enterprises, who back in two thousand and ten had made an application. I think it's important for the board to understand the fact that J.J. Enterprises does business as Lindy's Taxi and has been a licensed member of this community, a very important part of the community. In fact, it's ironic that the previous speaker was talking about taxi cab companies and how they're such an important part of making sure that the parking in the town, in the village, is acceptable and also providing for driving and all kinds of benefits to the town. In fact, what happened was that Lindy's Taxi, for twenty-five years, had been on Haven's Boulevard and during the revitalization of Patchogue, was approached because Tri-Tec was looking to purchase the building that they were in. Village of Patchogue did what they call an RFP. Some of the lawyers out there probably know what that is. For others, it's a request for a proposal that was done, where they were indicating that they were going to be putting a kiosk. The Village of Patchogue was planning to put a kiosk for taxi cab company at the train station in Patchogue, and they put it there to the public. We put a proposal in and won. Later on, we were contacted by the Village of Patchogue, saying that they didn't think that it was really viable to have a kiosk built. But they asked us to please vacate the Haven's property to allow Tri-Tec to buy the property and to move to another location. Many locations were available. And a realtor that was working with Tri-Tec in the village contacted Lindy's and said, please, you know, we want to, we want to buy this building on Haven's Boulevard for the revitalization of downtown Patchogue, and we'd like you to move your location. Given the fact that we had won this RFP, and we put that out as an incentive, we also, we purchased this property at fifty Medford, where we were told that we were able to operate there and have been operating there for a number of years. And I want to make it clear that I know that that's not normally an excuse for anything to prove how things are working out, because you don't want to say, well, you were there illegally. But we were actually asked to move by the village during this RFP process, which I have all the documentation, if anyone would like to see that. We won the RFP, and we were supposed to be built a kiosk at the train station. Eventually, during the whole planning, it was turned out that they decided not to buy that. So we were then operating out of the property that we purchased and were asked to move from Haven's Boulevard, and we're sure that that was a proper location, given the fact that there was a car dealership on the corner, a gas station on the corner, a enterprise rent-a-car, island-wide taxi cab, which is a few doors down. There's also a driving school that is a few doors down from us. Originally, when we made the application, we were denied because we were originally seeking to build a large tower for taxi cab transmissions. We were also looking to build a dispatch office on the back of the property. Since we were denied that application, we have relocated to another, another location and no longer seek to change the property in any way, shape, or form. We're not putting up any tower. We are not putting anything, any other structures on the parking lot. We just have a few taxi cabs that are operating out of the property and have been since we had won this proposal and never built the kiosk that we were promised. So nothing is going to change in the community for what has been going on for years. So time is really telling here that there is nothing out of character from this property. It is of the same general character as the permitted uses in the D1 business district. And if you drive past the property, which I have on numerous occasions just to see, you can see that the traffic in and out of that location is actually far less than the Honda dealership, the gas station, the enterprise rent-a-car, the car school that's teaching people to drive. So there's absolutely no change in character to the neighborhood. And we're simply asking for it to be approved because it's not specifically enumerated in the D1 business district, but it is certainly of the same general character of all the business activity that goes on in that neighborhood. And therefore, we are seeking approval to just change the use of the property to a taxi dispatch office without any alterations in the property of any kind.
Got it. Council, at this point, have denied the application.
Yes.
And it was denied on other factors as well. Traffic. We had testimony that there was a number of accidents from Main Street north to Oak Street, and that another use like this could exacerbate that. I believe there were seventy-nine accidents or something in the eight months prior to that. So we know it's a very busy car. The board has noted that people have pulled out of there from Lindy's Taxi, have gone north from that property, going across four lanes of traffic. We find that to be something that I'm concerned. Also, it was a denied application. How many cabs do you think park on this parking lot?
Approximately ten.
I'm going to tell the rest.
I believe that there are twenty licenses, sir, but they're not twenty. We also have drivers that take their vehicles home. So although we have twenty licenses, that may be what you're basing, that double that on. It is not the fact that those cabs pull out of there on a daily basis. So we have...
Well, if you're going to tell me that, if you're going to say that, please. See, first of all, we have an application to dispatch office. Dispatch means we can operate anywhere and just dispatch the cars. We're actually parking these cars on this lot, okay? When you park a car on that lot, that means somebody has to physically go in there and pick up that car. You can't tell me most people are on their buses. They must be parking on the property as well. So that's another concern at this point. Do you have ample parking for the people that are coming on to take the cabs?
If you drive by the car, you see that there are vacant spots behind our property that are on our private property that are not in tax in the village in any way. There's absolutely, it's, there's no overcrowding on that spot at all. In fact, you see half the lot itself is of our own personal property, is vacant. There's plenty of parking, and a lot of drivers don't necessarily have a car of their own. They're oftentimes lower-income individuals that may not perhaps have a vehicle of their own. They're oftentimes dropped off by family members or other means of mass transportation into the village. So they're not, it's not that there's a car for each driver that comes to take the vehicles. That is not the case by a long shot. And I think that if you have...
Do you say that you house a hundred percent of the people that come to your property to be housed on your property?
Absolutely, more so.
Okay. Any questions from members of the board? Ms. Friday.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Spence, so, because I'm still a little bit unclear here. So you're not just a dispatch office, the taxis are stored there, right? So when taxis are dispatched, if they weren't already at another stop, they may be parked waiting for their next assignment in the slot?
If there's a particular driver that's assigned a vehicle, and he is off for the evening, he's permitted to leave his vehicle there for the evening until the next morning or the next day?
No, I mean while he's on duty. So if he doesn't have a, while he's on his shift?
Yes.
If he's not delivering somebody somewhere?
Yes.
Do they come back to the yard? Is it like a holding area for the taxis that while they're on duty?
When they're on a shift, they are, there's radio transmissions. They don't come back and sit around and wait for people. They are, if there's a driver that's on duty, there's a limited number of drivers, let's put it that way. So there's no extra time. So it's basically, they're on, they're gone for four-hour shifts or whatever, whatever the case may be.
And so, and then you moved into this property in two thousand and ten?
Yes.
And have you ever, what was the property used as prior to...
It was a professional office space, I think attorneys, actually.
And so that's a change of use.
Yes, that's, that's what we're here for.
And then you realize this is a state road, correct?
Yes.
Have you made an application to the state department of transportation?
Oh, all of our vehicles that require DOT approval, which are certain...
No, for your curcut, for your change of use on a state road, for your curcut.
I am not sure about that, but I will, obviously, if we're required to be, yes, you would be, I'm not aware of that, that that's required.
Just to clarify, I mean, your interpretation of dispatch office includes vehicles on site, taxi cabs on site, and the utilization of those cabs exiting and entering the site for those taxi cabs?
It's not a constant in and out every second of a cab. I don't want you to get the impression that they come back after each shut and sit around in the parking lot.
Why else would you have the cabs there?
Because some people don't take the vehicles home at night. So we assign a certain driver a cab, and he may use it for eight hours and come back, leave the car there, and take his own transportation home. Then he would come back the next day, pick up the taxi cab, use it for eight hours. And yes, we would store it there overnight, but it's on our own property. It doesn't affect any parking in the village.
Do you have any other property for those cabs?
We have many locations within, on Long Island. So we try to keep a suitable number of vehicles in use for areas that may need them. So based on usage times of the year, summer months versus winter months, certain cabs may be in different locations throughout the year based upon what the necessity is. If there's something in Montauk, it may only be a lot of cabs out there for two or three months out of the year. And if it's something in a different part of town, it might be for other cabs.
It won't be the closest location to the location.
They have Ilandia, they have the closest locations, to be honest with you. I couldn't give you exactly, but I can tell you that in almost, we're licensed in almost every town...
No, 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 we're all familiar with Lindy's Taxi.
Yeah, I'm just saying, so it's not...
See, I think our prob, well, one of the reasons we denied, as the chairman indicated, was the, we had cabs crossing double lines, and we're just talking reality here. And it's a heavily traveled roadway, many accidents, and we've had testimony to that effect. And we're kind of puzzled, with the exception of the tower, as to how this is different from the application which we denied.
Well, I think, first of all, it's not just the tower. There was also an addition that was going to be built on the property, which I think the board believed there's going to be many more taxi cabs. Number one, and number two, I think that there was a police department record during the last hearing that was based in two thousand and nine, how there were thirty-five motor vehicle accidents upon Route one twelve, prior to us going into that. We have not been involved. Time is telling, and I understand that the board, you know, I hate to use this because I understand that, you know, I don't want to say, well, we've used it without your permission and look where it is, but you have to understand how we got there, and there has been no problem. We have had no accidents there. And I don't see how our use and character of the property is any different than a rent-a-car company that people are going in and out all day, or a driving school, you have high school students coming in and out there all day, or a gas station where people are coming out there a hundred times a day, more than my client. So it seems to be, it's satisfying the general character of the neighborhood and a simple drive-through, if you simply look at the businesses, you sit there, because I did this, and was watching where people were coming from. And I can tell you that my client was not one of the people that had the most vehicles by a long shot coming out of their property. And the study that was done in two thousand and nine was before we were even there. We were in the village at that point. We were in the village, you know, protecting the community. And I know that people have a, you know, sometimes when you say you're a taxi cab company, it has a negative connotation that there's some sort of transience around. But really, when you hear the restaurant saying, we need more public transportation, we need more people to pick up our customers after they're drinking, we need more people on New Year's Eve, we need more people. That's Lindy's Taxi, and we have had no incidents, no tickets. If you look at our record of having forty years, thirty-five to forty years in this community, and having licenses that have been renewed each and every year, have not had tickets, we're not in for it every week for violations, we're very carefully monitoring our drivers and the safety concerns of the community in every community on Long Island. Being the largest taxi cab company on Long Island, there's a real benefit to the Village of Patchogue to have a trustworthy, not gypsy cabs running around. You get licenses. We have an established requirement, which is one of the requirements, if you're familiar, I'm sure you are, with the taxi cab code, that we have a location within the village. Without our clients there, we are the largest provider, we have the safest record, and just to...
Well, I think, I think the requirements are going to have to be with dispatch, really.
Yes.
But dispatch can be simply directing cabs that are located elsewhere to go to a location.
But this is almost a not-in-my-backyard kind of thing. You can't say that you can dispatch in our town, you need to be familiar with all the people, be there quickly for elderly people that need a ride to the doctor, that need to, that need to be picked up from a restaurant, but that we don't want you here.
I don't, I don't think that's the, I think the idea is that if you are going to have cabs, and those cabs are going to be going in and out of that, of a particular location, it cannot exacerbate any safety problems.
And I agree with that, and I think actually the fact that we can house taxi cabs there actually cuts down on the number of cabs leaving and coming because our drivers are not taking the vehicles home. We keep them there. So if they're not being used for the benefit of the community, they're stored on our own personal property, they're not parked in a property lot, they're not coming in and out with our drivers going home, coming in. They're actually, when they're done, they're there on the safekeeping, they're not being driven, and they're on our own private property that's being housed, and we have plenty of extra spots. So there's more than enough taxi cabs...
So if we made a limitation that you can only store the cabs on the property?
Well, obviously...
I don't think you'd want that.
No, I'm not saying that. But there's no, what I'm saying is there's no detrimental impact by the fact that we can park them there overnight.
So I have just a question. How many cabs do you anticipate to be...
We have twenty licenses in the village approximately.
So I have ten.
And approximately ten are stored there on a daily basis?
I mean employees.
But it's hard to say because we go, because of the size of the company, it depends on necessity. If we're going through a period of time during Christmas time, for instance, we may need fifteen taxis out of that area. If it comes to a slow period in November, it might be eight.
In various shifts?
In various shifts, depending on the need. We're able, because of, we're based in Ilandia, so what we're able to do is, is we assess the needs each day or each season or each week, and can say, okay, you know what? This is a busy Christmas week, people need a lot of cabs. So we'll keep, you know, we always stay within the boundaries of our licenses. And we say, okay, well, we can put ten to fifteen now, twenty at the most because it's Christmas time. Two weeks after that, it might be half that, half that number of people. You know, we have businesses at various locations, so it's sort of like a shifting, you know...
Okay, so we're obviously getting closer to holiday season, Thanksgiving, Christmas coming. So let's anticipate, which, for argument's sake, say you're planning for the holiday season over the next several months. What do you anticipate for shifts in this particular area? Can you, can you, can you give us an estimate on that as far as shifts? How many employees would be in those shifts, working in those...
To be honest with you, I'm not a personal expert in the needs of the employees, and I could get you that information if you needed, but I would be making something up if I was going to sit here and say, I understand the exact number of taxi drivers that they need each day.
You know, our shift, do you know, is it, you know, five to one? Is it, are there certain hours that are more busy during the holiday season?
Well, I think that nighttime during the holiday season, the dinner hour, Christmas parties after work, people don't want to drive, and a lot of the businesses on Route one twelve are then closed. So say there's a veterinarian down the street, which there is, there's a beauty day spa down the street. If we're busier during the year, in the evening hours, when we're transporting people from Christmas parties, those businesses are closed. Where you have gas stations open twenty-four hours, you have a rent-a-car place that's open twenty-four hours. So for us to be singled out as being, you know, some sort of hazard to the community is really not a fair assessment because basically the less people that are driving, the more time that they need us. So we're making up for vehicles that would be on the road. If people were driving after Christmas parties, they wouldn't need to hire us. They hire us when they're not driving. And so that, that's when we are most needed, is when people don't want to be out in their own vehicles. There's no, you know, and sometimes we do transport during the day, our general transportation, our elderly people to doctor's appointments, to the grocery store. That's who generally use us. And there are also, and I think it's important to note, there are also restaurant employees that use us, that use our services to get to work so they don't need to park in the village. They can't afford it, they're not going to run out and pay five dollars every couple hours, sort of thing. So we transport chefs, bar people, you know, bar... So we transport chefs, bar people, you know, bar staff, waitresses, waiters. And we drop them off at work so that there's not a parking left, you know, in the middle of Christmas season. So I think that our benefit to the community must be recognized when it's brought into consideration for location.
A question I just, are you aware of any formal or informal policy of your clients that advise the taxi drivers that are coming, they have their own cars, to come pick up their cabs at that location and park them off-premise?
They absolutely are not allowed to. We have plenty of parking, and it's our policy that you're switching out your vehicle. And I would, and I know that this may be hard, difficult for you to understand, but many of them are saying, most of them don't have vehicles. Most of them taking a public transportation or dropped off by friends or family members. But we have plenty of parking on our lot. In fact, I was there today. Half the lot was empty. There's plenty of parking. So if someone was going to come in and take their vehicle, they could leave their vehicle at any point. We have an open policy in regard to that.
I just have a question, Bernie or Cal. It seems that this application is a little different than I think we all thought, because we thought we were just looking at dispatch.
Well, it doesn't include the tower, again, this other building.
No, but I mean, but my point is now we've got outdoor storage of vehicles and things. These are planning board issues, correct? Like, is there, are they going before the planning board?
I think we want to make sure what we understand by dispatch, as far as, yeah, as far as, one way of looking at it-
Like the storage of the vehicles, screening that, that stuff?
One way of looking at dispatch is to say you've got a place where somebody calls in and you assign a cab to go pick it up. But a more expansive view of dispatch, which appears to be that of the applicant, is that the cabs which are dispatched are actually located on-site. So I guess, you know.
Well, I mean, events like the no left turn issue, I mean, those are planning board issues.
Well, they, well, they go to the use itself, I mean, the likelihood of-
If I may, I don't, I don't see that our parking of the vehicles is any different than a law firm being there that was already there. If you have employees that have thirty employees that are coming in and parking their cars and leaving for lunch and leaving on the break, it's not that way.
Lindy's Taxi is-
It's actually a little bit-
Yeah, but Lindy's Taxi has been around for a long time, and again, it's one we think they are pretty successful too.
Yes.
So the cabs just aren't sitting in the lot.
No, but they're very successful, partly, and I'd say mostly, because they're law-abiding. There are a lot of gypsy cab companies that come and go. I've been representing them for almost twenty years now. So I know a little bit about the business, and the reason that they're so successful is because they make friends with the towns that they're in, in far as abiding by their laws and regulations and trying to service the community in a way that benefits everybody. And they're not looking to, you know, park all five hundred of their cabs on the location. You don't see them parked up and down the street. I think you can see by the way they maintain the property, and have for the last several years. And the way that the lot looks, it's clean, there's been no disruption of any business, and it's a lot more, less disrupted than half of the businesses that are on that road. And I think that just the cursory drive-through, you would see that, as I do today.
Sure, that's exactly though why I asked if there was going to be a site plan submitted to the village. That would just detail all that. Would show that the improvements you've made to the property, would show the landscaping, it would show where you're storing your vehicles, it would show the other parking available, I mean.
Well, it's just, I mean-
But I don't know if there's something more complicated.
The survey, was there a survey?
So, yeah, there's a survey, but it doesn't, it doesn't take too long. Right, I mean, I had, personally, I had no idea that what we were here. I thought we were-
I mean, I drove back there today. I think there were about seventy vehicle cabs or something like that, and there were other vehicles. Just parked in the parking lot.
Right.
Basically have a house in the parking lot.
Right.
Anyway, okay.
Are there any other uses or tenants in this building hall?
I don't, I believe actually that there may have been an application a while ago to the building department to put a, I think we were trying to apply for an upstairs permit, but I'm not sure whether that was approved. And I don't believe that that's been resolved, and so I think we were looking at to try to put a tenant.
Oh, technical counsel, if you're still operating in a parcel, that was then hired by this on the board of peers.
Yes.
Okay, that's where we're at right now.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the board? If not, I'd like to take any testimony or question from members of the club who would like to speak for or against. Counsel, if you're on those, we will find out.
Thank you.
Please.
John Bojack, Eight Knottson Street, and as usual, I come for one thing, and then I do something else.
I'm sorry, can I just say your name again, sir?
John Bojack.
Okay, would you say your address?
Eight Knottson Street.
Thank you.
All right, so hearing this for the first time, and I guess there's some other issues here, safety issues, zoning issues, and I'm not going to, I can't tread it out because we're folks who are more expert at what's been happening in the past. So I'm just going to react as a user of Lindy's Taxi and as a person who is listening to this story too about what happened, how this all came to be. Big Tri-Tec comes along, little taxi cab company is sitting in its office, sort of persuaded to move, thinks it's going to move. I tell you, I know about this. This was the intermodal transport idea.
Yes, sir.
Right. I was living under a fantasy. I thought we were still involved in that probably. I'm going to bring this up to the board and find out why this wasn't announced, that we've abandoned this plan because it was a complaint. And it's shocking to me to hear that this has occurred. But any event, so they found something, and then they're pressured sort of to move, and now they find themselves in adverse circumstances. And it sounds like they may be in adverse circumstances. They're operating in some kind of place. It's not a totally zone. There may be some traffic and safety issues as well, which are going to have to be dealt with, obviously. But I'd say equity argument here too. They got into these circumstances because of the village. And I think the village now, it turns out, you folks are in some spot, in some situation where you can make it a little bit whole. So I would say let's ask the attorney for the taxi company. I agree with her. That is an element in your decision, that these people didn't come to these circumstances on their own condition. There are lots of other contributing factors, including our own village government. Thank you.
Seems like it's feet up on Rose Avenue residence. I put a dumpster on the side of my house. Three cabs in my backyard. Unfortunately, I live adjacent to my property on Rose Avenue. It is back-to-back of clearly played glass, which places this bed at this point out to the left. For some time, we have this strip of land that's supposed to remain wild forever, which has now become also questionable. I just see my whole neighborhood being deteriorated. I certainly, in the wintertime, their backyard where the street of cabs is going to be, as the gentleman said, it is my backyard. You wouldn't want it in your backyard. I don't want it in my backyard. I don't want to look out my window on my upstairs, my bedroom, and see a few cabs. I did a study originally back in 2010 for safety. The infirmary department took me two days to go through all of it. It wasn't a fact that we were saying, or I was saying that by bringing the cabs to our area is going to have to create more accidents. All I was pointing out is that that strip of road between Oak Street and Main Street is deemed the worst road in the village of Patro. More MBAs, we respond to more MBAs there than anywhere. As you said, there hasn't been any. Thank you. There hasn't been any, but it's just more and more vehicles. You know, village has grown. I mean, it's certainly not the same village that I grew up in, as well as you people on board. I am not in favor of this in any shape, manner, form. I'd just like you to take deep consideration before you approve this.
What, just let me, because we did, we made reference to that.
Yeah, I know you did. I'm not stating it.
Yeah, and she, counsel points out quite rightly that it was 2009. Is it possible to get more recent, I mean, one from this year?
Oh, the records are definitely available, absolutely, right.
Is someone in a comparable position that you were in?
I am repired. If you would want me to do something of that nature, I'd be glad to do it for you to see if the-
I mean, just to see whether there has been a decrease in accidents or an increase. I think it might both either, you know.
I'll be fine. I'll do that, man. Absolutely.
Whatever position is advocated.
Okay. I have to get some information to do that, but I'm sure I get it.
Is that all right?
We'll be fine. If we can get some information from our, Patrick, Patrick ambulance company.
I'll be glad to do that, man.
Just to see what the facts are.
The private property from the ambulance company.
It would be just be, I'm not a member of the ambulance company anymore. I've served ten years in the beginning. Just to, you know, in volunteer work, you had to make a choice, infirmary or ambulance. I took the infirmary. And, no, this is particularly MBAs that we respond to.
I see. What about?
Very seldom an ambulance responds if they don't have an injury there.
Yeah, would the, would the ambulance company have records?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Well, absolutely. John Lachoy, I believe, is still the chairperson of the ambulance company. I can speak to that to see.
Could you get those?
Oh, I have no idea, but they would be available to me now.
All right.
Only one I know, I could pop, one I could get, ninety-nine percent sure it's infirmary.
Because this will tell us something about how.
If we get Patrick's infirmary, that would help us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, please?
No, thank you.
No, thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Mr. Solero. Hey, this is the chairman of the board members. My name is Gaspar Solero. I have offices at sixty-six Medford Avenue, which is two doors to north of the subject. A little deference to counsel's comments, I would like to share my comments, which in many instances is contradictory to the decision. I'm here about seven to eight hours a day. I also, the second floor overlooks the taxi cab business. There's no question that the taxi cab business does supply a service to this community. However, there's nothing that says it has to occupy a location that's not within the zoning of a dispatch office. And clearly, in D1 residence, D1 business district, there's no provision, as most of you are aware, for a taxi cab dispatch office, or a transportation depot, or anything similar to it. So the use is clearly illegal. It was illegal the first time they applied, and it is still illegal now. Let me give you a little bit of background, because I'm a Realtor. I had some contact through the Realtor who represented the taxi cab company, and I may be able to share a little bit different light on the story. First of all, I would like to comment that they were not required to sell their property. They chose to sell. And they were paid handsomely for it, and there were other places in the village they could have gone. So although they may have been coerced into moving, they didn't have to move, and no one forced them to take all the money they got, okay? And no one forced them to take this particular location. As a matter of fact, they made application to this board before they moved into this location, and it was turned down. When I offered them another location, which is not important, it's still where it was, but it was no location that was zone E Industrial, which is a site they may have been able to go on. I was told, not the village brought pressure on them to go there, but that a trustee named Jerry Queen brought pressure on them to go to this particular location. After they were turned down, within two weeks, they were on the site occupying it. Now, that's a real obvious blatant use of, or blatant act in face of what you people have turned down, whatever, oh, those members have turned down. And it's not fair, because they do change the character of the area quite contrary to what counsel says. That's been a law office for more than forty years, and there's never been more than two attorneys, there's never been more than four employees in that location, and there's never been more than eight or nine cars. These people move in, and the only improvements they made to the property on the exterior, so that they didn't destroy their facade of what they were doing on the inside, was to clear the parking lot almost to the boundary line and pave it. Now, I don't know if you need to commit to do that or not. However, they also renovated the entire interior of the building without permit right after they moved in. And they installed a twenty-five-foot tower on the roof. Now, I don't know if that's illegal or not. So for someone to suggest that now using it as a dispatch office has to be questioned. I can't guarantee it isn't because I haven't been in the building, but I can only tell you what I've observed. Tonight, I was there at seven-thirty. There were nineteen cars in the dumpster pad in the parking lot. There's only room for six more cars. One of the biggest concerns I have, because I manage and have an interest in the three buildings, the medical buildings across the street, is that I have asked repeatedly, numerous times, for people who work at the cab dispatch office to move their cars, because what they do is, because there's not enough parking on their site, which is what our concern was originally, they park in thirty-three or fifty-five, or seventy-seven, and walk across the street. I've had to put stickers on cars, and the way I identify the cars is the tenants complain to me that these guys are doing this. So I have stick, you know, I put, in some instances, I got a sticker that you put on the windshield that you can't remove. It says, "You are parked illegally. This is your third notice," or something like that. So I've stopped some of it, but haven't stopped at all, and they continue to park across the street. Why do they do that? There's not enough parking on the site. It's clear as the bell. For them, for counsel to suggest that their use is less than Honda or all these other things that she's mentioned, first of all, the only person, the only business that's south of Oak Street that she mentioned is the Honda dealer. And that's a permitted use in that lot. All the rest of the businesses that she's referring to are north of Oak Street. The door kennel, the door house, the, so on and so forth. I guess I picked most of the things. I'm disappointed that, quite frankly, that they're usually the southern business. Business that the village could use clearly. I'm pro-business. I'm not anti-business. That's not where they belong. They do not belong. All day long, I see their cabs crossing double, two double, yellow lines. I see them go past the site, do U-turns, across four lanes. I don't see it occasionally. I see it all the time. That can't be the owner's fault, and it can't be counsel's fault. However, they are employees of the taxi cab company, and as much as you tell these people not to do it, they're going to do it. But this is the kind of stuff that really goes on. They have to stay there all day long and you see it. There isn't a day alive when there's some kind of violation or some kind of almost accident. Now, it's the bank adds to it, it's the businesses, other businesses, but the taxi cab business doesn't help it any. Has only exacerbated all of the challenges up there, and any day now, someone's going to get killed. So I appreciate this second time that you would consider turning this down. They have no right to be there. There are other places they could go, and I respect for the question. Take all this information into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solero. Any other members of the public who would like to speak for or against this application? Do you want to?
Yes, let me finish up.
Response.
I just want to say, it's very little confirmation in what he said. He said that there was only room for six more cars in my own lot, but yet we're out of spaces that they have to park in other lots. But, so those two things don't jive with me. My lot has plenty of room. So the fact that there are people that park illegally in other places, I don't think they can be in any way related to my property or my clients because my client is there with his employees, that anyone that wants to park on the lot is encouraged to do so, and there is no illegal parking. There's no parking in the street in a park place. So the fact that somebody would choose to park illegally in some other person's property when there's plenty of spots, by his own admission, six empty spots.
That was tonight, counsel. It's not, don't think on a Friday or Saturday, there are no spots at all.
To say that people would choose not to park on my property and would park illegally is, you know, doesn't make any sense to me. Also, by saying that my drivers come out and they go a certain way, I don't believe that, first of all, we have no problem with any restrictions, that those are motor vehicles, New York State driving restrictions that we're required to abide by, and my drivers are all that take courses on the proper way to drive, and, you know, they're fired if they're not abiding by those. So I don't think there's any more of a chance that anyone in my employees is going to be driving that way as opposed to the bank, the gas station, the driving school for teenagers, the enter cars rent-a-car. And to say they're, you know, all subject auto schools at twenty Medford Avenue, barren Hondas across the street, enter cars rent-a-car is at eighty Medford Avenue, Islandwide taxis at one eighty-eight Medford Avenue. So I think the requirement that this is some sort of out of character for the area really is disingenuous. area really is disingenuous. This seems to be completely in character with the area. And to say that it's not specifically listed in the D-one, there's no provision for taxi, there's no provision saying taxi care business in any part of the code, because they can't possibly list every single business. So they say that's why they use the catchall general character, because they couldn't get every single property. So I believe D-one is the general character for a taxi care business. The, it seems like there's some sort of personal vendetta to say that he was, that he offered my client another location. I don't know what his interaction with my client was years ago, but it seems like there might be some personal right there. But as far as my, you know, my indication that there was this, this RFP, I have all the documentation, if you like it, that we were awarded it, that we were sent the contract, that we did compare the RFP. So any documentation you want to verify my representations to this board, please advise that JGE and its affiliate, Lindsey's Taxi, has been awarded the intermodal transportation hub, the taxi component. I have all the letters. So if anyone's gathering my story of why we left Havens and were asked to leave, so that Tritech, I think everyone's familiar with Tritech, we were asked to leave, and we were trying to go to a place that we were told we were allowed to occupy. There was no bad intent here, we would have been happy to stay where we were, we were fine there, we've been there for many, many years, and we're operating successfully in the area. So I think that equity has to prevail in this case, and that given the character of the neighborhood, just a drive-by would indicate that there's nothing that sticks out about my client's operation of business that is any different that anybody else.
All right, if you would like to submit anything for the record, you're certainly allowed to, and if anybody in the audience would like to submit anything for the record, I'd like to...
And I think it's important that if, if any kind of increase of traffic is gonna be attributed to my client being there, it's very easy to see from the reports that he's gonna be submitting with regard to fire, ambulance, you'll see my clients, they're, all the cars are registered in their name, so they're part of these accidents, that's one thing, and then we have a real issue here. But if it's because somebody was drunk-driving, you know, or they're at the gas station and pulling out...
I, I think the point was that it's, the argument is that it's a dangerous area to begin with, and would this, presence of the taxi company, and there's been apparently some observations of the drivers not always adhering to the rules of the road, et cetera, would only exacerbate the danger to do, as the claim.
Yeah, and I understand that, but somebody has to occupy that premises, and I just, and I think that you're, it's not like it's gonna be vacant if we're not there. You approved a driving school for teenagers, so I think that you need to keep that in mind.
Interesting question. There was a point that this Spencer brought up, but I think Mr. Solero, whoever were the part speakers, would be pushing for, for our counsel. Someone made the point that there was no provision in the code for this. Does that, does that mean it's clear, does that mean it's...
No, it means we have to make the determination whether it's of the same general character, and we, and we have to weigh all those factors of forty-five, sixty-six. See, that's our general standards for special permits, so in essence, special permit provisions would kick in here, too. And we would have to decide whether those criteria have been met, given the testimonies we put forth and then it came part of the record. So, I think, go ahead.
Just one more question, and I hate, certainly, if you're not, you know, required in the village codes to go to planning board or whatnot, I understand that, and that's not my concern so much. But my concern is that all we have to evaluate, we have many, many criteria under this special use permit that we're going to have to evaluate in terms of whether or not you meet those criteria. However, all we've been officially submitted is a survey that actually indicates, to me, that half of your lot is a small, very small parking lot. Your lot itself is only sixty feet wide. Certainly, to point about site planning and my data, and that's certainly not really enough, being that your driveway is on one side and have more than one row of cars.
In other words, you're saying...
So just looking at what they're saying is only half is a driveway, and I guess the other half is not identified as such. I would have thought it was, you know, natural grass of some sort. We've had testimony from adjacent residents saying that there was some weanering of landscaping or whatnot that may have occurred. So I feel that there's a lot of unanswered questions by only having a survey.
At the very least, you would want to see...
A basic site plan, just a one sheet, site plan showing where is the landscaping, is there screening?
Where's the parking?
Is there fencing, is there fencing between you guys and the adjacent residents? Are you screening, is, is there really a twenty-five-foot tower there, and are you screening it? What, what are you doing on your site to, to be a good neighbor? Those things I think we would need to see as part of the application in order to evaluate all of that criteria.
Yeah, I didn't realize that. This is the part I would want to have, but we would be happy to do that.
Well, we've gotta figure out, you know, we would wanna see a striping plan, where are the cars stored overnight, you know, how many parking space, you know, if, if one of the things that, I was not on the board before, so I certainly have no preconception or knowledge of, you know, your application except what you presented tonight. So I'm just saying, I don't know how many parking spaces, you know, you have a lot here.
We'll be happy to do that, we wanna, we wanna, you know, do whatever it's made comfortable. I would say just because we don't draw, we don't hire someone six to eight weeks to get something in place for you, and we'd be happy to do that.
You? That would be the, you say, the nineteenth?
November the nineteenth, is that the date? Would you like me to submit them ahead of time, so you have an opportunity to review it?
That will show whether there is a power there or not. I think that would...
Whoever, there's an antenna that's within the town code, but there's no tower, there's no, I'm sorry, I keep saying town code, just, sorry, I have it.
I think we've asked, too, that perhaps Mr. Kane could get something through his role in the fire department on some of these safety issues, and maybe we could get something from the, some data from the ambulance company. And if Mr., anybody in the audience, Mr. Solero would like to make any submissions that he thinks go to these issues, so we would be happy to accommodate all of this. Okay?
Okay, we'll have something submitted for it to the next page.
Okay, so...
I'll take a motion on the adjournment, I was, yeah, adjournment, please.
Assistant, make a motion to adjourn this application for additional information to be presented to this board to November nineteenth.
Both of you adjourn the application now to November nineteenth, second to Mr. Shabat, all in favor?
Aye.
The votes, see you on the nineteenth.
Thank you.
House key, one more. For adjournments, the next application will be fourteen dash sixteen. Hope anybody wants to leave, we're pretty well done. J-War, how do you pronounce it, J-War?
J-War, whoop.
J-War, whoop. Four forty-five West Main Street, cease permission to construct three hundred and thirty-six square foot, addition to commercial building required, leave before thirty-five thirteen. Applicant wishes to extend commercial parking area twenty feet into a more restricted A residential zone for the purpose of providing additional parking. Applicant also requires, leave before thirty-five thirty-one A, eight twenty-three parking spaces required, ten parking spaces proposed. Subject premises located D two in A residential zone. He's asking for it in the German. He gave us official information.
I provided you and counsel a copy of the deed that requested.
Yes, because we had a question.
And we give time for counsel to review it. I suggested that the applicant can back on the fifteenth.
So this is gonna be, can we have a motion, please, to adjourn this application to October fifteenth? The spiking?
Sure.
Motion, I have a spiking to adjourn this application fourteen sixteen to the fifteenth of October, second to by Mr. Shabat, all in favor? Aye, opposed, so carry. The next one keeps coming up, I don't know where this is going. Out of fourteen dash thirteen, Christine Remley, Eighth Way Avenue.
Yeah, I haven't seen a sign.
Sees permission to construct second story, this, to a single family dwelling, currently not performing use, thirty-five seventy, this is located A residential zone. When can they dial?
There's a lot of there, she did, they do, Germany definitely, we have some issues locating here, architects. Continue with this. I mean, we could remove it, but then do we have to go to the mail?
But ultimately, if it goes too long, she's gonna have to read down anyway.
You wanna give her one more German till maybe the first week of November, if nothing, I could let her know.
I guess the second week of November, until, you know, either...
Let's go to November nineteenth.
Either we go ahead or we withdraw the application.
They have a motion on November nineteenth, please.
Assistant, adjourn to October, November nineteenth.
The application fourteen dash thirteen, as the son made a, made a motion to adjourn this application to nineteenth of November, second to by Mr. Carrick, all in favor? Aye, opposed. Anybody wanna go home? Most of them tonight's meeting. Oh, we're closing. Motion, Mr. Motion, Mr. Motion, yeah, Mr. Carrick, we have a motion closed tonight's meeting, second to by Mr. Shabat, all in favor? Aye. Nobody's opposed?
No.
Ms. Philip, thank you very much. Congress, the board, thank you.
Always a pleasure.
Interesting ones tonight.
That's right, and videos of the zoning board, they get seen.